All right, let's call it over the city council meeting for Tuesday, June eleventh, two thousand twenty-four. The time is now seven o'clock P M. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silent meditation. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the covered voice of change, of nation, of the God indivisible, omnipotent, infinite, and everlasting. Okay, first item is roll call.
Mayor Scott Nickel.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Frank Gerton.
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton Bingham.
Here.
Councilmember Shawna Hearn.
Here.
Councilmember Adam Dyer.
Here.
Okay, next items excuse all council members, we're all here so we can skip on to additions, violations, or changes to the agenda if any. Does anyone in council have any changes? During that, we'll move on to presentations, proclamations, and introductions, but there isn't any. So we'll skip on to approval of minutes for first for the regular council meeting of May fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Does anyone on council have any changes? If not, we're in a panic.
Motion to approve the May fourteenth council meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Hearn, second by deputy mayor Gerton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Uh, next is for the noise ordinance workshop minutes for May twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four. Does anyone in council have any changes? During that, would you entertain a motion?
Motion to approve the noise ordinance minutes from May twenty-first.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Hearn, second by deputy mayor Gerton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. On the reports, we'll start with the city manager's report.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council members, residents here and watching at home. Uh, tonight is the first night of our live stream of meetings. If you're watching this at home or you watch this later and you have some feedback of how you think we can have a better production, please shoot me an email. Um, we hope to have a better product as we go on. Staff has tested this immensely, but real-life application always is the best teacher. Uh, one action item tonight, uh, the Cheyenne Boulevard sidewalk project. Ninety percent of complete design is attached. Uh, staff seeks, uh, city council consensus to provide this updated design to adjacent property owners prior to soliciting bids and seeking release of transportation impact fee monies from Brevard County.
I put to the plans, I don't have any issues with it, it's pretty straightforward, very simple project.
Next item, paving project update. The previously approved milling and paving project commenced this week. We will be posting signage at bicentennial park prior to closing the parking lot for the seal coating and restriping portion of the project, which will add some additional much-needed parking spots. Fire chief Lewis, fire chief Emeritus Scaldo, and other volunteers traveled to Cala, uh, earlier this month to visit the truck manufacturer and see the status of the build-out of our new firing engine pictured, um, on the screen and in front of you. A push-in ceremony will be scheduled once the new truck is delivered with city manager Emeritus Ryan traveling down from Tallahassee to do the heavy push, uh, preliminary taxable valuation report was received from the property appraisers office late last month. Uh, with a preliminary gross taxable valuation up seven point eight percent. This is in line with the eight percent increase projected in the five-year, uh, financial model capital plan previously presented to council. The legislative tracker is updated and attached. And we have a couple employee recognitions. Police department victim advocate Tiffany Petrero received the attached handwritten thank you note from her husband, from a resident whose husband passed away unexpectedly. Uh, the widow was very gracious of how compassionate and helpful our staff were. And also Chief Bova received an email from a citizen, uh, wanted to thank Sergeant Wimmer and Detective Claremont, um, for their professionalism during a traffic stop. This is one thing, um, we all love about our police department and living and working in Indian Harbor Beaches. The, the citizen was issued a citation and still sent a thank you note for the professionalism and demeanor in the stop. Um, very uncommon in other jurisdictions that, uh, police officers are thanked for issuing tickets. Uh, tentative agenda for the next, uh, council meeting on the twenty-fifth is, um, it's a public hearing and second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four oh two, adding paid fire department staff to, for the retirement system. Possible first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four oh three, amending the noise ordinance, um, selection of the Florida League of Cities, uh, annual conference voting delegate, and resolution seven fifty-four opting out of the tax exemption for affordable housing. Uh, there are many things coming up, uh, soon. The tree preservation board meets next Wednesday. Sharpen the park five K race is Saturday the twenty-second. We'll be having a short ribbon cutting ceremony at five thirty on June twenty-fifth for the public works offices back at city hall. And at six o'clock that night before the regular council meeting will be the e-bike workshop. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next is city attorney's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, by now, all of you should, uh, know that recently the federal court entered a preliminary injunction essentially halting the requirement that elected municipal officials complete submit Form Six. Uh, the court found that requiring such officials to disclose certain financial information, uh, that they would not ordinarily disclose is what's called compelled speech and violates the First Amendment of the United States Constitution. The, the, the court entered the injunction and it basically is a statewide injunction, applies not only to the annual reports that council members are supposed to file, but also candidate reports to, a candidate who are also required to file Form Six. Now, there's a bit of a scramble going on about getting all that, the, the website and the forms back in order with, um, the state after the injunction, but I, I, I assume they'll get it back into order so we could, uh, then only have to file our Form One. Okay, that's the default. So Form Six isn't required, Form One is. Um, and, and it, it's highly unlikely that anything will change before July first, so that's, that's going to be the way it's going to, uh, be for a while here. Um, so that's the good news and, um, as I said, Form One will still be required, which was the form that most of you were comfort, not comfortable with, but most of you did file before the Form Six requirement came about. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, next is council comments. Uh, anyone in council has comments, I'll start with Deputy Mayor Gerton.
Uh, had the opportunity to go ahead and, um, join, uh, all the satellite graduates about a week ago. It was best weather, I think, ever. And of course got an opportunity to meet our new principal of the high school, which was there when I was a teacher. She was a soccer player. Uh, gonna be real good. And of course, the past, uh, president, uh, principal was also there. It was a real nice affair, uh, just a great evening, a lot of proud parents and a lot of proud students. And I think, in essence, we, we just have a nice school up there, you know, at Satellite.
Um, last night I had the good fortune to attend the Space Coast League of Cities dinner meeting, and the speakers were Rachel Sadoch, which is the clerk of the court, and Dana Blickley, the property appraiser, and Lori Scott, the tax collector. It was a very interesting, informative meeting, and I loved the way they all worked together. And I think our county's in good shape with these, um, constitutional representatives. Lisa Cullen, sorry. Thank you.
Councilmember Dyer.
So, uh, I believe as we go into summer, I, I feel like we need to have another meeting or, uh, agenda item for the paid beach parking for non-residents. Uh, every time, every weekend, you see all of our beaches filled, and now they're starting to park across the street giving toad. So the last workshop we had, I believe a lot of the residents were out of town due to spring break, so I think we should, uh, revisit that, um, possibly next, uh, city council meeting, uh, next, uh, twenty-third.
John, can we, uh, set something up?
We have a relative light agenda. If you want to add it to the agenda, we have workshops scheduled for the next two regular meetings, um, whatever the council's pleasure. I'm not sure if you prefer to have this as a workshop or as part of a council meeting.
Personally, I'd prefer to do workshop, um, and the discussion more and more about that, and I'd like to see us agree. Do you consider this again, really want a better, or, uh, you know, just give more opportunity to have a council meeting?
I agree. The more people that, uh, show up and, you know, contribute, the better. And I know if, even if it does go through to the agenda item, there'll be three, four, or five more meetings after that, so.
Are you good?
So earliest, earliest, uh, we have a workshop the next meeting and then the following meeting as well? That's what you're saying?
I think that's your answer to, uh?
The, yes, if we want to try to stick to having the, the workshop before a council meeting, the next available slot would be the twenty-third of July.
Twenty-third of July, or if you want to apply something to?
Yeah, I'd like to get a little center on the document, catch up.
You, the, if we, we have the eighteenth of next week. Um, the following off week is the second of July, so we may run into the same issue of folks traveling that week. And then the sixteenth is an off week.
I'm okay if it needs to be an off week, the cabinet is, uh, to not be that.
Yeah, so if we make it into a workshop, then, you know, there's going to be discussion, and then after the workshop, it would still have to then go to an agenda item, correct?
Well, that's true.
I can't help but feeling that we've already discussed this issue already and that it's, you know, we only have about thirty parking spaces at each of our beach parks. They're only full on a beautiful beach weekend when Channel Six News says, go to the beach. Um, through the week, there is plenty of parking evenings, early morning. It is only a beautiful beach day weekend where it is a problem. And there are many county parks that we can go to to park for free. I have a sticker issued for my car from Satellite Beach that lets me park at High Tower in Paradise for free without the cost to our taxpayers. And, um, as long as I'm here, I'm always going to look out for less overhead, less bureaucracy, um, less red tape. Um, we're blessed that we live so close to the beach, and I know I'm probably talking too much seeing as it's not in, on the agenda, but I just feel like I really don't see how, it would only be a financial burden, and fortunately, most of us live close enough that we could walk to the beach, whereas many people are not so fortunate. I, so I just wanted to say how I felt.
Well, I, I know we've been through this before, but I'll support our council member and, uh, be open for a meet, a workshop meeting.
And let's keep, uh, just one point, uh, I, I've stated this, Shawna, uh, I'm open to discussion on myself, uh, especially given the concern about people not being available previously. I do want to make sure that we, that this thoroughly, I know we get, I mean, I would kind of like to fully make a, a final decision on this, so I'm okay with the workshop at this point.
Um, I'm fine with, with the workshop also. I, I have looked at this multiple times, still can't figure out how you take nine, nine thousand people and figure out who gets the, uh, parking pass, and then how do we enforce all that? But I'm willing to hear suggestions and maybe there's an idea out there.
Okay, so back to a workshop.
What day? Yeah, what day?
Um, what's our next open for non-council?
Next Tuesday, the eighteenth or July sixteenth.
I would prefer July sixteenth, please, would be my preference.
I'm, I'm all for June eighteenth.
Cool it up, let's schedule now.
I mean, I'm open for June eighteenth, you know, so.
I can do the eighteenth as well.
You know, I said get it on the books and let's talk about it and not wait till summer's over.
One thing I will say is that I'll be out of town that day, but you do know how I feel. I'll be, um, celebrating my brother's birthday out of state, and I'm flying out that day.
So let's do it for a day that you're gonna be here.
Yeah.
Respect your attendance.
Right.
Let's do it for another day here. What's the other day, the eighteenth?
Can we go Monday?
Sixth, the sixteenth of July.
Do we have to go on Tuesday, Thursday?
Can we go on Monday?
So, can we go on a Monday, then, uh, Shawna will be in town, June tenth?
June eighth again?
That's true.
So, seventeen, seventeen.
Monday, June seventeenth would work, I would be here.
The streaming got that.
Everybody good? June seventeenth?
June seventeenth, Monday, I'm available.
Workshop, do you want to do it, do it at seven if you want, or you do it at six, or?
Seven.
If that works for you, man, I know you're.
The earlier the better. I fly out the next morning at six thirty.
Six o'clock, are we all doing six o'clock?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock to seventeen.
June seventeenth, six o'clock, thank you.
Okay. Let's see, uh, Dan, did you have any comments to, to, to? I'm obligated to.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Um, I haven't been able to, uh, to comment for a little bit here because we keep, uh, things keep moving, but in April, I met with the, uh, Brevard County Public School Superintendent, uh, Rendell, about, uh, policy twenty-five twenty, uh, specifically, which details the purchase of textbooks and how to oppose the textbook's selection. Uh, and to oppose it either when they're making the selection or three or four years later when they finally come into circulation in the school system. And the, um, twenty-five twenty, uh, policy is now completely void of any meaningful input, input by parents. Um, and, um, I have a little history with working to make this, uh, policy patient-friendly. Since twenty sixteen, I've been before two different, uh, committees that were hand-selected by the school board, excuse me, by school board employees. I lost both of them for a book that's now been pulled out of circulation here recently. We now have a statute that states that if something is deemed inappropriate to read at a school board meeting, then it is removed for, from circulation and reviewed, which is a good thing. The problem is, is that, um, uh, for instance, any book that's challenged as being age inappropriate or pornographic is reviewed by a committee of four, uh, employees of the Brevard school system. No parents, including the parents that brought that issue forward. So, um, uh, I'm not happy that it's gotten even tighter, and I express that and, uh, have asked, uh, superintendent to please reconsider getting parents where they're actually involved in what is brought for, uh, their children. Um, during April, I also made multiple phone calls to the Saint John's Water Management District for guidance and also, uh, um, information on meetings coming up. In May, I attended a four-hour joint, um, in the River Lagoon and Saint John Water Management District meeting in Sebastian, Florida, Florida, in her, in hopes of learning more about the I R L and in particular Mosquito Lagoon. I was interested in the fact that the Mosquito Lagoon was recovering, and I wanted to learn why and where not. Uh, starting with the twenty, uh, excuse me, uh, twenty-ten freeze, which killed fish, which decayed and then killed the algae, which further decayed and caused the blooms, algae blooms that occurred. Today, though, uh, the, uh, Mosquito Lagoon has the greatest, uh, amount of seagrass and population, uh, recorded. And I, and I'm wondering why is that, what happened? Could that be replicated in our lagoon at the same conditions that caused the incredible recovery of Mosquito Lagoon were mimicked? Um, the, the folks at, uh, the Saint John's Water Management District weren't willing to, uh, honor my request and take me to Mos, or meet me at Mosquito Lagoon and then put me in a boat with them that should be the experts and allow exploration of the, uh, lagoon's habitat. Uh, thankfully, I met a, a lady by the name of Laura Lee Thompson of the. Uh, thankfully, I met a lady by the name of Laura Lee Thompson of the Merritt Island Wildlife Association. She had overheard me speaking to someone and, um, and she noted that I was exasperated and she offered her expert, expertise. And I also, uh, in May, attended the Satellite Beach Library Advisory Board Meeting. Uh, in June, uh, Ms. Thompson, uh, excuse me, Ms. Thompson of the Merritt Island Wildlife Association provided an extensive in-board, in-boat exploration of the Mosquito Lagoon with a history of the destruction of seagrass by the twenty-ten freezing and ensuing algae blooms, as she stated, it became a desert. In 2020, the first sign of recovery began with approximately five to ten percent seagrass coverage and was slowly recovering. Then Hurricane Ian hit, which caused, and this is stuff I didn't realize, uh, which caused tremendous washovers of seawater into the Mosquito Lagoon. Uh, and that was all it took. Uh, today, the seagrass coverage is at ninety-five percent and the manatee population is, is flourishing. Uh, and it was, uh, it was really educational and it was amazing to be in that area. I had no idea the scope of it. And as you look at the boundaries of the, the, uh, land that separated from the ocean, you gets all green and then you see these sandy areas. And that's, that's where that came in, the hurricanes or very high storms came in and pushed all the salt water in. And they, uh, Ms. Thompson attributed, and she mentioned a couple of experts, attributed the comeback to the increased, uh, sodium content, the salt water. Um, and I also volunteered for, um, and was accepted as a delegate to the Ring Resources Council, uh, Indian River Lagoon Assembly to be held at FIT in July. They're looking for more volunteer delegates and it's a two, two-day session and there'll be a lot of, uh, people involved with lagoons here and elsewhere in the state coming in for this. Um, also, I attended the, uh, League of Cities Meeting last night, which was, was fun. It was almost like a comedy routine, routine between those three. And finally, I wanted to say welcome to all of you here in the chamber and to those you, of you at home, to our very first livestream city council meeting. As a newly elected councilman, there are four areas I pledge to focus on. Livestreaming was one of them. I met a mom with children while getting signatures to run for office. She gave me the idea of livestreaming meetings. She said that there are those unable to attend, uh, city council meetings or any other meetings because of family responsibilities such as work, children, homework, making dinner, giving baths, getting ready for bed, or other circumstances such as health. So in the spirit of transparent, transparency, your council voted to have livestream of our public, public meetings. Uh, we are starting with the city council meeting and want to ensure that you at home or online have an exceptional experience. We have plans to add more meetings as resources, which is mainly manpower becomes available. And by the way, you can now sign up on our website for different meetings that will automatically sends alert, send alerts to your inbox. And when you get those, um, alerts, you also free to read or, and/or download the meeting agendas and determine if the meeting is interesting, if you have meeting, uh, is of interest to you or your family. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I have nothing. So we will move on to public comments on agenda items only. I do have some speaker cards for the public comments at the end of the meeting. Uh, there is one item on the agenda that I will likely open up to, public comment related to the noise ordinance, so. Anyway, if anybody wishes to speak on agenda items right now, they can. Uh, please step forward, state your name and address. Seeing none. We will, we don't have any unfinished business. We'll move on to new business. This is item number four on the agenda. First reading of ordinance number twenty-two-four dash zero-two, uh, adding paid fire department personnel to the Florida retirement system. This is, uh, to approve on first reading, ordinance number twenty-two-four dash zero-two, adding paid fire department personnel to the city's retirement plan as special risk members. I'll read the ordinance into the record. Ordinance number twenty-two-four dash zero-two, an ordinance of the City of Indian Harbor Beach, Bovard County, Florida, relating to adding special risk membership category, uh, into the Florida retirement system to include paid members of the Indian Harbor Beach Fire Department, providing for severability, repeal, codification, and an effective date. City Manager Coffee?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Historically, the city has participated in the Florida retirement system in pension plans for non-collective bargained employees with the categories of regular senior management deferred retirement option plans. With the addition of a paid chief position this year, staff was informed by FRS that we would need to adopt an ordinance authorizing addition of special risk member category. The attached ordinance accomplishes this requirement. Additionally, uh, staff was informed that, um, the city has the ability to, to buy back the time between, uh, Chief Lewis's start date and effective date of this ordinance. In accordance with, uh, state statutes, a business impact estimate was calculated and is attached to this agenda memo. Therefore, staff recommends city council approve on first reading ordinance number twenty-two-four oh-two, adding paid fire department personnel to the city's Florida retirement system plan.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone in council have any comments related to this ordinance? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve our first reading ordinance number twenty-two-four dash oh-two, adding paid fire department personnel to the city's Florida retirement system plan.
Second. Second.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Gertin and a second by Councilmember Boone. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Item number five, resolution number seven-fifty-three, adoption of a, of a revised fiscal year twenty-four employee pay and classification plan and implementation of specific mid-year salary adjustments. This is for adoption of resolution seven-fifty-three, adopting the fiscal year twenty-four revised employee pay and classification plan, establishing minimum and maximum pay rates for each position and authorizing specific salary adjustments. Uh, resolution number seven-fifty-three, resolution of the City of Indian Harbor Beach, Bovard County, Florida, amending resolution number seven-forty-five, amending the employee pay and classification plan for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four in accordance with Article Six, Section Four-B of the city charter, providing an effective date. City Manager Coffee?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the FY twenty-five, twenty-four budget contained funding for an update to the pay plan conducted in two thousand twenty-one. Uh, Evergreen Solutions, which did the original pay study, was commissioned to do the update. A representative of Evergreen Solution is here to provide a brief presentation of recommend, recommendations for, um, this, it, with, uh, retirement and taxes included, is forty thousand four hundred and forty-six dollars out of a budget of forty-five thousand for fiscal year twenty-four.
Good evening. My name is Mike Musraki. I'm a project manager with Evergreen Solutions. I appreciate you all having me today this evening. Uh, I'll take you through a very brief presentation on what this study incorporated. So for those of you who would have been here during two thousand twenty-one, it would have been a similar process, but for those of you who are new to the council, I'll walk you through it brand new. So the very first thing we're gonna touch on is what was the methodology behind this study? Then we're gonna get into the results of the comparison survey of the rates of compensation you offer your employees here at the city versus pure jurisdictions, and then we'll go over what we're ultimately recommending to the city for adoption. So with that, with any market survey, and this is what most, uh, most folks will think about with a compensation study, it's a comparison point. It's looking at what are the salary ranges that you offer for the various types of positions that you employ and what are your pure jurisdictions, the cities and counties and towns around you all? Uh, what do they compensate for similar work performed? And so what you'll see on this slide, on the right-hand side, those are the pure jurisdictions that were included in that survey or comparison process. This survey consisted of us looking at what are the pay ranges that you have right now for all the different types of positions you employ? We looked at the actual job descriptions as well, so we were able to break down what are the job duties and requirements that you have here, so it's not simply a comparison of title. We then go over to those pure jurisdictions and look at their job descriptions to see what type of work are they performing and looking for a comparison. So if you have a certain level of accountant here at the city, we're going to look for a similar level of accountant at the counties and at those, uh, cities as well. One, a couple of things of note. When we did this comparison, the counties that are included, we know they are much larger than you all. They were only included for your frontline staff, given those are much more transferable positions. We know that the directors at the county have a very different level of scope than a director here at the city. And so the counties that were included, those were only for those frontline staff, which are direct competitors to you all for those frontline staff positions. So with that, in terms of results, the figures you're going to see here are percentage differentials. So the way we arrived at these, uh, percentages and effectively what your market position is, is we look at range-by-range comparison for all of the organ, all of the positions you have versus what those peers have. So in my example, if we say you have an accountant and you're paying a starting rate of forty thousand and your peers are, uh, have a starting rate of about forty-five thousand, that difference will be represented as a percentage. A negative percentage indicates where you're behind the market average. A positive percentage would show where you're ahead of the market average. Right now, if we were to look across all of the positions at the city and consider all of their salary ranges and where they compare versus the pure average, you guys are lagging the market by about eight percent at the minimum with the starting point of your salary ranges, about six percent at the midpoint or the midway or halfway point of the full salary range, and about four at point eight percent or, you know, close to five percent at the maximum. And so what this tells us, if we were gonna put a diagnosis code on this, an organization that's about one or two percent around the average would say you're basically at average. That's within that margin of error. Once you're in that five percent category, we'd say you're starting to lag the market. And when you start approaching ten percent, we would say you're starting to lag significantly and we would expect you to be feeling recruitment and retention challenges at that point because if employees can see about a ten percent differential in their pay versus whatever job ad they'd see out available, they start to vote with their feet at that point. So we would say you guys are starting to somewhat lag the market, um, more significantly at the starting point of your ranges. The reason you see that variance is the design of the ranges themselves. Your ranges are a little bit wider than your peers, so you have a little bit more runway, so to speak. That's why you actually gain a little bit of market positioning. As an employee, the longer they stay here, they're a little bit closer off. So if you were higher than minimum, they'd be eight percent behind market, but if they were to cap out at the city, they'd only be about five percent behind market. So they gain a little bit of ground over time. Uh, but regardless, on average, employees are behind the market, uh, when it comes to their salary ranges versus your peers. Um, just the only other bullet point I did want to speak to is, uh, to give you an idea of the breadth of comparison, we had about eight and a half matches per job on average. So we had a pretty good sample frame. Usually five is the magic number, we would say, is to have a reliable average to say this, we have enough comparison points. Uh, we had eight and a half, which is a pretty significant number of comparison points to say we have a good reliable average when we're saying how you are comparing against the market. Uh, one thing, another thing of note in terms of trend, uh, knowing we looked at all of your positions, that while there is variation across every single job, there is no, the, the numbers were showing you the averages of all positions. Every single job has its, has its own average versus the market and there's variation that exists there. The biggest trend that we saw, though, is that your highest level positions are the furthest behind market, which is not necessarily uncommon for a small city, uh, that your director pay is not as competitive versus other jurisdictions around you that may be larger. In addition, so based on all of that, going into our recommendations, we're recommending the city adopt a, a two-tier approach to try to address this gap. The first tier is to do a small across the board, uh, increase essentially, uh, to all employees, so this would be a one percent to all employees, and then there would be a more targeted secondary adjustment that we would do to those, uh, positions that were the furthest off-market essentially. And so for those, rather than do a flat percentage, we're doing, uh, we're trying to do something preventative as well, where we recommend adjusting the pay range for those roles. We would recommend they move into a higher pay grade that's more in line with the market average that we're seeing from the peers essentially. And then for those individuals who are in those grades that are moving upward to reflect market conditions, they would also receive a three percent increase so that their, not their range isn't moving, but their pay stays the same. That way, they are moving a little bit with that as well. So they're receiving a little bit of an adjustment so that their actual salary, not just the range, gets an adjustment. In addition to that, we are recommending that you adopt a grade thirty-one. This is something that's a little bit different. This is a structural recommendation. Um, this is, uh, directly because we found that the highest level position at the city right now, the city manager's role, is actually not in a competitive range altogether. And so while we're not making a recommendation on the city manager's salary, that's something that was up to the council to always decide, um, we are recommending that you do need to adopt, ideally, you would adopt a new range that would be more suitable for a city manager's salary range, uh, because the current range lag significantly versus the market and that's in line with that same trend of your directors being further behind market, which is why a number of directors needed to be adjusted or, uh, we recommended adjustment as part of this process. As far as the impact from an annualized salary dollar cost standpoint, from a, a full annual, uh, fiscal year, this would be about adding a hundred thousand dollars reoccurring to the budget. But for FY twenty-four, uh, as City Manager Coffee had mentioned, uh, the cost is closer to about forty thousand for the remainder of FY twenty-four at this point. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys have about the process, the recommendations, anything I can answer.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any council have questions regarding their analysis?
No, not really. Were we that far behind last year?
Well, I don't know if we were that far behind last year. I don't think we had a study than last year.
No.
We, we had twenty, twenty-one.
Okay.
Was the last time we had something done, so.
And, and two twenty, it was a similar market position you had to twenty-twenty-one. So to give you an idea, peers on average across Florida, now this is a generalization for all of Florida, have been moving their employee salaries by about three percent has been the average we've seen. Obviously, some jurisdictions, if we're talking about the Palm Beach, Broward area, are doing closer to five percent, but the overall state average has been closer to about a three percent increase, uh, pretty much all years post-COVID, so twenty-twenty-one onward. We've seen that hold pretty steady. Um, we don't know when that number will come down because the years prior to that, uh, would not have been that high. But it, it's, there's, because of the market labor conditions we've seen in the private sector, it's spilled over to the public sector as well, where increases have been much more continually in that three to four percent range, which is a bit off-trend for the last twenty years.
It's definitely, we, we need to, uh, our staff is our most important, you know, and definitely we need to go ahead and take care of our staff and definitely it needs to be competitive. And, uh, that's the way I feel like that, so I'm all for resolution number seven-five-three.
Yeah, same here? Sorry?
Same.
Um, well, in that case, I would, uh, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve resolution number seven-five-three, adopting the FY twenty-four revised employee pay and classification plan, establishing minimum and maximum pay rates for each position and authorizing specific salary adjustments.
Second.
I have a motion by Deputy Mayor Gertin and a second by Councilmember, uh, Dyer. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero.
Good job.
All right, next is review of draft noise ordinance. This is to review the proposed language and give direction to staff. City Manager Coffee?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Based on, uh, feedback from, uh, y'all at the workshop we had recently, uh, City Attorney Bone, um, did the heavy lifting of getting a draft ordinance in place and Police Chief Butler and I met with him multiple occasions to try to address any concerns about specifics to our city. The attached draft sound ordinance has a few, uh, spots highlighted where, uh, we felt it was more of a community, uh, value choice regarding specific, uh, decibel readings. Um, I have a Word document available if there's specific changes. Uh, we did not want to put this on for first reading until we knew, uh, y'all were comfortable with the, uh, ordinance in form. Uh, specifically, the, the current ordinance would be deleted in its entirety and this would be adopted. So when we bring it back to you in the traditional form, there'll be a whole lot of sections with a lot of. with a lot of strike-through and a lot of underline. But Carl and Chief Butler are here.
If, if I might, Mr. Mayor, what we did or what I started doing and the chief and John reviewed it, we, we, we went from a decibel slash unreasonably loud and noisy standard to just a pure decibel standard. We took away the subjective enforcement regarding unreasonably loud. That in and of itself, although there's some justification in the case law, that led, that leads to a lot of interpretation and subjective enforcement potentially. What may be loud and unreasonable to one person might be pretty to another. So we, we took that out and went straight decibel. As John said, it's going to be a complete revise of the current ordinance. Felt it was easier just to do a new one than try to go through and do strikeouts and underlines in the current section, which would have probably led to a, a very difficult read if you were trying to figure out what was going on. So again, we would go in, if approved by the council, and strike through the entire existing ordinance and then adopt all these new sections. Now, what we need from the council is guidance on decibel levels, okay? We didn't presume to know what y'all wanted and didn't want to, you know, give a, a number and have that be debated as to why did you pick that number? We figured it's up to y'all to pick that number. And as you can see in the agenda package, there are some, some, there's some information showing what a decibel level for a certain type of activity would be. Now, as far as measuring, you know, it, it will require the, the city to invest in meters if we don't already have up-to-date functioning meters. So that'll have to be done and, and training will need to be done on those meters, but, you know, at least if someone complains, we go down and say, here's the meter, here's the sound, here's where we measure it, and it doesn't meet the criteria, therefore it's not a violation. It's, it's pretty much numbers don't lie kind of thing. So with that, we'll turn it over to the council to provide input, guidance, suggestions regarding the, the draft ordinance.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I like the, the rewrite for the most part. It does, like you said, it takes out the subjectivity from the current ordinance, which I think is a good thing. Makes it certainly a lot more cut and dried. I don't, I'm not sure if, I'm not sure if tonight council's going to be able to give you all the decibel level numbers. I, I know I've been primarily focused on decibel levels as it relates to whatever, acoustic music, live music, whatever, just noise in general for normal, I say normal time, regular businesses, not so much auto repair shops and places like that where you might have heavy machinery operating at a much higher decibel level. I'm not sure what the, the right threshold is, but I know there's information here about that, but that looks like it goes anywhere from, you know, ninety decibels for a tractor, not that we have a lot of tractors around here, but chainsaws, leaf blowers, pneumatic drills, you know, they're all in the over one-hundred decibel range. So I don't know if we can get there tonight on that, maybe we can't, because my input on the maximum levels as it relates to something such as an entertainment-type venue is, and I've said it before, I think sixty-five decibel seems to be kind of that magic number, if you will, of, and that's from me doing some research on other places that have a decibel level set for that type of sound. So I had that in my head as far as what should be adopted for that scenario. I also had in, I think in Table One, it's got the hours listed to nine PM. We currently have ten PM, right?
Yes.
So that's, I don't, I didn't understand the change to go to, to go to nine. So I don't know that I necessarily want to change that. I mean, I don't think that was really a, a major concern, at least that I've heard so And then there was one part of Section eight thirteen C. Go down to, it's on page seven. The wording's a little confusing on there. Eight, Section eight thirteen C, it's page seven of the ordinance. Unless otherwise specifically provided here, in the sound levels in Table One above shall be measured from the nearest point of a habitable structure of the sound-affected property to the nearest point to the sound-affected property of the property where the sound is emanating from.
It, it, it was hard to write. So, no, it is.
It's hard to read, too.
And I don't know that we're ever going to get it straight, but if you, if you're, someone's complaining, okay, you start at their property and assess you can the closest their property is to where the sound is emanating. And that's where you're going to measure it.
Okay. And that's what I thought that the intent was of that, just the wording of it was, it got a little, I had to read it a few times.
And I, 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 I got that highlighted in my head that that was going to be an issue. And believe me, if somebody could come up with a better definition, you're not going to offend us at all. We're, we're, we're good with anything you come up with, but that's the intent. You know, you don't want to measure it from the property line from where it's coming from, you want to measure it from the property line where it's being received.
Well, talked about the habitable structure, so, which kind of makes sense. It's, the, the, whatever your house is or your condominium or townhouse unit is, that was another thing is, you know, you have a, a complex like that, you have multiple people in there. So is it from the unit of the person who is making the complaint? Seems to me that that would make sense to do that, because, you know, it may not be that person that's far, far away in the complex, it might be somebody in the middle, but that seems to me to be a logical way to do it. So if you have so many complaints, the police officer comes out, they go to that unit, you know, on their balcony or whatever it might be, and they measure from that point in the direction of the so-called offending.
Source.
Source.
Yes.
The, the source of the noise. So if that's the intent, I think that's, I think that's, that's a good way to go with that. It keeps it very straightforward. That's, that's why the property line thing gets a little swirly to me. To me, it's, should be from source, which would be the building of wherever it's coming from, to the actual person's home or townhome or condominium unit.
To answer your question about the times, I think, what Chief Andy corrected on wrong, we, we had tried to make all the times consistent.
We talked about that, I noted that the change was nine o'clock, nine o'clock instead of what is currently right now is ten o'clock. And what we was trying to do, instead of whatever we decided to do with the times, my thought process was kind of make it all the same, instead of saying, this one thing could be at this time, this one thing could be at that time, this one thing could be at this time, have its own limits, it makes it a little bit simpler to, to kind of enforce, if you would, and acknowledge and, you know, educate. To answer the question about the, the property line and all that good stuff, I was trying, what we were trying to do is make it easy for the officers that come out. If you come out, I'm going to stand at your back porch, if you're saying that's where you're standing, I'm going to put up our sound meter, and that's where, I don't want to walk to the property line, how many feet from the property line, or just wherever, wherever you.
And, and the point there is, how do you know?
You don't know necessarily.
That's right. If you're not a surveyor, you know, if I'm standing next to the wall of the house.
Right.
I know that's, that's a wall of the house.
So if you're saying that it's too loud, we can, I'm going to be standing right there next to you, we're going to be able to measure it right there. And we do have the sound, the sound meters, and we do have the calibration machine as well, so we're ready to go there.
Yeah, I, you know, there, there are certain activities that I, and I know we're trying to go for consistency here, but there are certain activities that are more conducive to being a little bit later at night, such as music or amplified music, whatever the case may be. I get there are some uses that you would reasonably expect to, you know, cut off at a certain timeframe, you know, mechanic shop and those types of things, you don't want that going on. It, it's also potentially higher noise level limits as well. So I, I mean, I would be in favor of just keeping the timeframe the way it was.
Ten o'clock.
And it could be, maybe that goes under the amplified music section of it, and then that would be kind of the one exception to that.
We can make whatever work. Yep, we're pretty.
That's, those are my thoughts initially. Again, I, I don't quite know what is the most sensible decibel level for some of the other uses. Yeah, I know we're striving for some consistency, but you obviously can't do that for uses that are extremely noisy, shops, industrial areas and whatnot, they're going to have louder noises, that's all there is to it. So, and we want, we don't want to be putting people in the non-compliant situation as soon as we adopt this ordinance.
And, and we're not in a rush to have it adopted either. I mean, certainly if the council wants to digest this, then we can put it on the next agenda for further discussion, that's great. We just wanted to give y'all something, because it was a, it's an issue and we wanted, we want to get it done, but we don't want to be jerky.
What I would like to see is for the other areas, you know, for the noisier ones, if you will, again, I don't know exactly what those, the right decibel level is for that that makes sense, but I'd like to see staff come up with some suggested levels on that. Obviously, we don't want one hundred and thirty decibels, that's not what we're after, but it's got, it has to be reasonable.
Can do some research and figure that out.
Yes.
Councilmember Hume.
I definitely would say we need more information and time to digest this, because on the decimal list we've been giving, like a baby crying is a hundred and ten decibels, you know. To me, I mean, those numbers really mean nothing to me. I need to see what other people are doing and what is reasonable. And as far as the amplified sound, I think I do disagree with you, Mayor, about the time, only because the way I read this paragraph on amplified sound, you know, it does, the quiet time is from nine PM to seven AM. But I think that I could have, and we're not just talking about a commercial building here, but I could have a amplified music coming out of my garage at nine-thirty at night, and it would be not conducive to the neighborhood.
I would absolutely agree with you on that. I do think there's a split off for a commercial use versus a residential townhome, kind of, whatever it might be, but maybe there's a set aside for commercial properties. I'm, I'm not sure exactly where to go with it, but I totally agree with you, you know, having a neighbor blast and stuff after a certain period of time is, gets a little bit unreasonable for sure.
Well, I'm, I'm in favor of treating everyone equally according, accordingly. I mean, if, if nine is good, good enough for the guys that unload the paint trucks at that paint store, for instance, or doing lawn servicing, they have their, their limit, their time limits. I think if we start pulling things out, then other businesses and citizens would look at it also. I mean, I have no problem with the, you know, the music and finding a good level. I, I think that, you know, if you live someplace and, I remember when my, Penny was ill for quite a while, and they were shooting fireworks off across the, the road here on this, on this side, and I forgot what time it was, it was, it was before that they were now allowed, or no, it was past the time where they were supposed to be doing that excessive noise. And I didn't even think about calling the police, I just went over and asked them nicely, would you please, my wife, so? And, and they, they, they abated, but I, I think carving things out will give a, a poor, will give a, a different impression of what we're trying to accomplish. I want to see, I want to see their business do great, which it's doing, from what I understand. But I'd like so, say Monday through Thursday, and then the weekend, maybe it could be a, you know, Friday, Saturday, Sunday could be at ten PM, something like that, but something that gives consideration to the, the people that are around there and also to the owners.
And I'm just trying to make it reasonable for the type of business use. And, and, you know, I don't know if that's a, maybe that's a, another way to look at it, maybe it is Friday, Saturday and Sunday, or Friday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, it's ten PM for commercial, this is nine PM on the other days. But we're getting into setting the different times now, the officers, the enforcement just gets more and more complicated.
If we have to give them a little chart to keep in their pocket, then we can do that. I mean, we, we can make things easy, I was just trying to make it simple for the citizens as a general rule, this is what it is.
I think keeping it simple is a good idea, and I just, I think it does have to be consistent. And if you're allowing it to be noisier on weekends, you don't know if people are nurses or doctors working shift work, and they might like that quiet time on the weekend. One person's weekend is another person's work schedule.
Yeah, I think, it, it, like Shawna said, I mean, you can have somebody work weekends and somebody doesn't work weekends, I think, you know, I, just, the less that we, combinations we make for days and times, I think the better off we are, personally thinking, you know, if we want to go from nine to seven or seven to nine, whatever we want to go, I think. If, I'm a, I'm, I feel like if it's seventy or seventy-five, let's go seventy-five, give them an extra five, you know, that type of thing, you know.
Talking about the decibel level.
Decibel level, you know, that type of thing, let's not, you know. And looking at this thing, we got home, and we got work, and we got recreation, that's a lot of items here that our police have to be concerned with, because there's no telling what's going to happen. So the, the better we can go ahead and make it, and the decibel level, and I agree with you, if it's happening in that bedroom or wherever, you go ahead and use your meter, the better off we are. And so I have no problem in the direction we're going in, and...
So you want, you want us to try to get a, a list of what other cities' decibel levels are?
Yeah. That's probably a good idea.
Yeah.
So I was, I was unable to attend the workshop, but, you know, I looked over the, the sample decibel levels, but I had to do more research as well to try to figure out what would be a reasonable number. Also, the, I'm in favor of keeping it like the old ordinance, flat rate, ten o'clock every night, that way it's simple. And potentially, the word habitable structure could be a pretty loose term, right? You know, it's like...
Residential unit.
I would say res, potential threshold of the nearest residential dwelling or something like that, you know, like the permanent residential structure, because a habitable structure could be a clubhouse, it could be something, you know, just something to kind of clean that up possibly, but that's your area of expertise, so.
What would the police do if they went out to a detached, you know, garage or something like that?
It's not habitable.
Yeah.
Yeah, it has to be.
Primary residence, however you, whichever you want to word it, I think.
But I mean, we do have situations where people, people do go and... But I mean, we do have situations where people, people do go and live in there overnight. There are situations.
Yeah, but...
I think they'll consider that when they get the call and go...
They're probably not gonna call me, because they know they're out of ordinance, right?
Exactly.
Yeah, it's not living, yeah, living unit, but that's all, it's just that, that word seems kind of loose. Possibly clean up the language on that, but keep it at ten o'clock.
And I, yeah, I don't mind the consistency, but, I mean, I'm, I'm gonna push it towards ten o'clock, because I'm gonna be where I would head with that.
Yeah, I could sup, I could support you at ten o'clock.
So, this is just for direction to staff. We do have, I will open this up to public comment, I do have Jason Sykes. Jason, if you wanna step forward and state your name and address, please, you have three minutes. You know the drill.
Jason Sykes, nineteen forty highway winner, owner of Titan Tonic. First off, I just wanna thank you guys again for letting us do our event. I know it was a bad time with all, everything we got going on with the noise ordinance. Am I gonna be able to get a copy of that? That was my first question, if I get a copy of...
Absolutely.
Of the ordinance, of course.
Yeah, just because I would like to share it with the rest of my people.
Sure.
Because I have some questions on it as well, especially the nine o'clock change all of a sudden I just saw, because it's been ten, we never talked about that. I just wanna go in the right direction. I know a lot of this, we're saying this is all about the city, but I know what it's about, we all know what it's about. I'm doing my best I can. I mean, I don't know if you've got any feedback from the residents lately. We're trying to bring in smaller pieces of music, we're ending early, we're doing everything possible to try to be friendly with everybody. We did this event, there were so many people there, I don't know what the response was from the residents or the businesses, but the businesses that were part of it made money, they had fun, and we had, by my clicker, in and out for the day, almost fifteen hundred people in Indian Harbor Beach that day. So, for me, that's all I really have to say, and I'll be at the next meeting to hopefully get through this noise ordinance thing, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Okay. So, direction to staff, I think is pretty clear.
Yeah, we got it.
Okay, all good?
The three of us will...
Okay.
Chief, did you get any complaints?
Well...
I haven't heard anything from any of the residents either.
No, I heard nothing but positive out of...
Yeah.
Yeah, I've heard...
Everything.
Thank you.
Thank you, Detective Austin.
Yeah. All right. Next item, item number seven. This is establishment of a tentative stormwater utility assessment rate to mail out to property owners. This is for approval of the tentative fiscal year twenty-five stormwater utility assessment rate of seventy-two dollars per equivalent residential unit or ERU to be included in a notice to property owners in accordance with Florida Statute Section one ninety-seven point three six three two subsection four, paragraph B. City manager, coffee.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. At the April five-year financial model and capital improvement plan workshop, staff presented proposal of a seventy-two dollar per year stormwater utility rate for FY twenty-five. State statute requires us to advertise this as a increase of a first-class stamped mail to every property owner at least twenty days prior to the public hearing to adopt the rate in the role. This is the meeting that we need to adopt the rate to mail out. The council does not have to adopt that rate in August, but this is to verify that the rate goes out at seventy-two dollars a year. The current rate's forty-eight dollars a year, it's been that rate since two thousand and seven. Purchasing power has eroded forty-seven percent over that time. This will help get us back to where we were in two thousand and seven. Folks who are on the city council or come to meetings regularly know that the state has mandated pollutant loading of the Indian River Lagoon reduction requirements for the city and all other cities in basin management action plan areas. We are very close to achieving the twenty-five percent reduction requirement for twenty-five, the fifty percent reduction by twenty thirty, and the seventy-five percent reduction by twenty thirty-five will be a challenge, but this increase will help us to leverage state funding to do more stormwater projects. Therefore, staff recommends the city council adopt the fiscal year twenty-five mailout notice stormwater utility assessment rate of seventy-two dollars per ERU to be provided before the August thirteenth public hearing to adopt the rate in the role.
Okay, thank you. As much as I hate to recommend raising rates to our residents, the lagoon is definitely a primary priority for us, and the buying power of forty-eight dollars is, just doesn't, it doesn't get it anymore, if you will, we have, that buying power is much, much less than what it used to be. And I feel like we don't have much choice. I do think that the rate increase, when you look at it comparatively to the other cities in the county, I think it's, it's very reasonable, it puts us right in the middle of the pack. There's seven other cities out of our sixteen that are over a hundred dollars. So, I think we're, we're being very reasonable with it, I think it is going to a very important cause, and as you said, it's, this is, this is, these are things we're mandated to do, so we have to pay for it some, some way. So, I mean, for those reasons, I'm going to be likely in favor of, of doing this, but of course, that's subject to input from council. So, Deputy Mayor Gerton.
Yeah, I, I, I just think it's a no-brainer, and we're still gonna be in good shape as far as the money's concerned, and we, we need, you know, we're a lagoon city, let's face it, we have to take care of those expenses that come to us, so I just see, I just see it's a no-brainer.
Shaw.
Yes, I agree. We've had no raise since two thousand and seven, and I am miss frugal as far as taxpayers' money, I'm, you know, really will do anything to keep expenses down, but in this case, it would be penny wise and pound foolish, because this is money that we do spend on drainage to keep our cities, to keep everything out of your house. Just to, it's important, and yes, and it does mandates for the lagoon, but yes, we're way below the curve of everybody else, so it's, it's just moving up a little bit that is totally in one hundred percent a necessary expense. I hate to say that, but it is very important.
Yeah.
I agree, no one likes a, a rate increase, but I think it, it makes sense to do, do our part to protect the lagoon, and potentially the state could come in down the road and make requirements that could be a lot more drastic increase, so we should start, get ahead of some of the costs now.
Okay. Councilmember Boone.
Yeah. This is for all stormwater, so if the, any of the pipes are deteriorating, et cetera, well, this will go to, to repairing those. And I was looking, we, it was four dollars a month, and it's gone up to only six dollars a month for this. So I think it's very reasonable, and especially with all the mandates that we're getting from the state down through the, the county, that this is, as our vice mayor says, a no-brainer, so I'm in favor of it also.
Okay. I'm hearing no other comments, so I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion for approval of tentative fiscal year twenty-five stormwater utility assessment rate of seventy-two dollars per ERU to be included in a notice to property owners in accordance with Florida Statute Sec, Section one ninety-seven point three six three two four B.
Second.
Of most of my councilmember Boone, second by Deputy Mayor Gerton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Item number eight is appointment of an alternative member to the tree preservation board. This is to appoint Mr. Stephen T. Smith, or as I understand, there's another resume that was received from Kenneth Bowman, to the vacant alternate member position on the tree preservation board for an indefinite term. City manager, coffee.
On April twenty-third, the city council accepted resignation of a voting member on the tree preservation board and raised an alternate member to fill that unexpired voting member position. Staff has solicited resumes, Mr. Smith submitted his last week, Mr. Bowman's resume came in today. Staff recommends city council appoint one of the gentlemen to the tree preservation board as an alternate member for an indefinite term.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone on council have any thoughts, questions?
Is Mr. Stephen Smith here tonight? No. I just, just was curious, because the first, first line of his thing, I was asking a question, it says, doesn't really have a whole lot of tree experience, but he was willing to throw his name in the hat, so I was just, was gonna ask him what his motive for us to serve, that's
Mr. Smith was one of the people who put a resume in to fill late Mayor Pinnacle, Deputy Mayor Pinnacle's position.
Okay. Is Mr. Bowman here? Do you wanna come up for a minute, just real quick? Don't worry, we're not gonna grill you.
Much.
Yeah, I mean, no, I just figured you'd come up and introduce yourself and...
Yes, that was my whole point of coming to this meeting, I wanna introduce myself to all you, I know Shawna, I've met Adam before. I, I own a local business, I started a local business inside of Indian Harbor Beach as a handyman, I'm, I'm licensed and insured, I'm actually from Oregon, so trees are in my blood. Granted, they're all fir trees and stuff like that, but...
Totally different.
But I, but I very, I really do care about trees and native plants and step to those areas. I served in the military for nine years as a combat medic, I worked for the state of Tennessee as a public servant, so I do understand what it is to be a public servant towards a city, and I just would like to be considered for this position.
Okay. All right, well, thank you for applying.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Okay. If nobody has any specific questions, then I would entertain a motion to select one of the two gentlemen.
His name?
That was Mr. Bowman, Kenneth Bowman.
Motion to approve Mr. Kenneth Bowman to the tree preservation board.
Okay. I have a motion by Deputy Mayor Gerton, and a second by Councilmember Dyer. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero, Mr. Bowman, you are now yet.
We want nice trees.
Item number nine, this is continued participation in the existing county CDBG and home program urban county agreement. This is to authorize Mayor Nichol to sign a letter to Brevard County continuing the city's participation for the next three fiscal years in the county CDBG and home program urban county agreement. City manager, coffee.
In two thousand and fifteen, the city entered into an agreement with Brevard County to enable the county to receive and maintain an urban county designation from the U.S. Department of Housing Urban Development. Through this, the county was, has been very successful in obtaining federal grant funding that have used for multiple purposes, that through this participation, the city residents have the ability to participate in the county's home program, which provides funding for qualified first-time home buyers, as well as replacement housing program. Every three years, HUD requires Brevard County to verify continuation of these agreements. Staff recommends city council authorize Mayor Nichol to sign the attached letter indicating the city's desire to continue in this partnership.
Okay, thank you. Anyone on council have any comments or any questions? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve Mayor Nichol's signature for the attached letter indicating the city's desire to continue in the partnership.
Second.
A motion by Deputy Mayor Gerton, and a second by Councilmember Hume. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Item number ten, city manager annual evaluation. This is to review the summary results of the city manager's one-year performance evaluation, and by motion, accept the summary results. City manager, coffee.
I'll say I'm very gracious for the vote of confidence that you all have given me individually. I thank you for constructive criticism of areas to improve. It has been a very enjoyable two years, my wife and I are very happy being part of the extended IHB family, and I look forward to continuing to work to improve the city for the residents and visitors. I believe the rest is in y'all's purview.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I think you're doing a fantastic job, I think it's evidenced by the scores that we're giving to you. And just, I mean, to me, keep up the good work. There is, I did note that there's, hold on a second, find it eventually, there's a lot of pages here, so. Well, I mean, I think there's, there needs to be a pay adjustment made. If I can find where the information is, I can maybe...
I noticed this part here, two point five.
That's not right there, if I can just find that page, I'll be good.
It's the agenda item, yeah.
Yeah, so, as you'd mentioned, all other employees received a two and a half percent COLA and a two and a half percent progression pay raise for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four, but also in the prior agenda item regarding, you know, the salary ranges and the pay, I think it's that much more important to make sure we work toward righting the ship, if you will, to get your pay in line, more so in line with what should be expected for a city manager. You know, with that, I'm seeing that, to me, just off the top of my head, of course, this is open for discussion amongst council, that a five percent raise would be appropriate at this time. Now, again, open up to council. Councilmember Boone, Deputy Mayor Gerton.
Yeah, we're talking about, basically, as salaries go, he's a little bit on the lower end right now, and five percent will bring it up to where he needs to be there, as far as salaries are concerned.
And I don't know if that's the case, I think your point was just, this is what other employees are getting, I don't know how far off that is, and, you know, I don't know if that's something that's, we, we address a five percent now, but then address specifically where your pay should be, I guess is, you know, we've got a lot of folks that need adjustment to their pay, and we wanna make sure we're fair to everybody, but at the same time, we've gotta get people close to the range they should be in.
Well, I, I think in, in all fairness to John, in what he's taken on here and, and the shape of the city and what he's done there, five percent would get, get him to a range where he needs to be at. So I would definitely support that. So, I would definitely support that for him in this situation. And the city is running smooth right now.
I'd be in favor of that and also considering what Evergreen put together also, including that, and after we do the initial five percent.
Okay. Right, so, John, you know what the deficit is or what Evergreen came up with? We might as well just hear it now and get the sticker shock out of the one.
What do you have in here?
I don't think it's in here.
I think that, yeah, it's here, it's in there. I just don't know where.
I don't think they broke it down for...
Yeah, I don't think they broke it down. I don't know if you had that.
Yeah, my, my position was twenty percent below, the minimum twenty percent below.
Just slide them in tomorrow.
We knew someone had it.
And we still got a bunch of work out of you.
Wow, rubbing salt in the wound.
Wow, that's a lot. Yeah. Yeah, that's a lot.
That's below average, I think. Twenty below average, was that what? All right, so, I mean, again, in the spirit of trying to get everybody's pay to where it should be and the ranges they should be, John, is the adjustments for other staff, what we're doing initially, I mean, at some point by adoption of what we talked about earlier, what we agreed to earlier, how soon will they be brought into those ranges? How quickly will that happen into the proper ranges?
That is the, the challenge, to have addressed all the, we did an annualized adjustment of a hundred thousand dollars. To bring everybody up to where they should have been, would have been in the neighborhood three, four hundred thousand dollars. And one of the things I think the council knows that I take very seriously is the fiscal health of the city long-term. And when you commit to salary increases, you're not just committing to one-time dollars, you're committing to future growth of that. We will look hard at this year's budget to see if we can address those positions that are woefully out of whack. There's some department directors are twenty-plus percent, I believe one is close to twenty-nine percent pay range, lower than it should be. It's not something that we can solve in one year. And it's not something that, quite frankly, is politically popular to give specific raises to the folks who are in the highest of the pay range. I was very conscious of that in working with Evergreen, but I'm also very conscious of the folks at the highest end of the pay ranges are often the folks who, when this council wants something done, are the folks who put in the extra hours to make that happen. So, I, I will be very gracious, whatever you give me. I don't expect anything more than what my staff was given. For example, senior staff previously in this meeting got a four-point-oh-three percent bump. That's on top of the five percent that they got in October. So, I, I would respectfully request you don't give me anything more than that because part of the reason you think I'm doing a good job is I have a good, good set of staff in this room and who come to work every day that enables us to do good things.
Okay. So, we don't really have a timeframe as to when we can make up the ground with staff, whether it be over two or three, three years or whatever that, whatever that number is. We obviously have to get caught up. So, I understand the need to try to spread some of this expense out somewhat, but ultimately we, we want to get everybody caught up sooner rather than later. And, I mean, I'd, I'd like to apply the same rationale to your pay as well. I mean, I think what's fair is fair, and I agree with your thought of not going above and beyond what staff is getting. But at the same time, I want to make sure that we, we're doing this over a reasonable amount of time. We don't just put a Band-Aid on it for now, and then we don't pay attention to it later. I want to make sure we're doing this over a, you know, a certain number of years. So, I don't know how much sense that made to anybody, but...
I don't know. I, I do agree that we need to catch up. And what do we want to do, one year, two years, or three years? I think three years would be the furthest out, I'm thinking, you know? But we do need to work on catching up at that, into that time.
So, two things at work here, there's, like the way I see it, there's staff, there's the, the rest of staff. And moving forward, maybe coming up with a plan that does that over a specified number of years, catches them up, and we has a budget for it, but we do it over a number of years. And then there's your position, which is, it's a little different, so. So, you're saying that staff got a, let me get that again?
They, they got a five percent increase in October, and the staff who are most out of whack got a four-point-oh-three percent increase tonight.
Okay.
I have a question. We passed resolution tonight, seven fifty-three, and it says the resolution takes effect June fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. When I, I thought that implemented the Evergreen studies.
It, it did, but I instructed, excuse me, I instructed Evergreen to exclude me from the recommendations because my compensation should be set by the city council, and I don't believe it's appropriate for me to make the recommendation of what my salary should be. I, I had a chance two years ago to negotiate a starting point, and then from there on is up to the city council to make any adjustments.
Okay, because I see in one of the whereas, it says that there's thirty-one pay grades, and we've only had thirty, but I thought we boosted you up to be thirty-one by this resolution, so a whole nother pay grade level.
That, that did, but there's, there was no adjustment to my pay in that. I basically moved up a pay grade, but my pay is the same as of right now.
Oh, boo. That doesn't seem right.
So, I guess, I'm going to amend my, my statement of what I would be in favor of, what I would recommend would be a seven-and-a-half percent increase, again, with the intent of catching up, just like for everyone else, for all the other staff. But we have to start somewhere, and I think we've got to, to sprinkle a little more sugar on it to get caught up, and I think that's where we need to go. But again, open to any other comments or suggestions.
No, I, I could support that in the situation that he's in. Financially, seven-and-a-half?
And it probably won't surprise anybody that I had some backup on my work computer here of different scenarios. My current salary is a hundred and forty-five thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. A seven-and-a-half percent increase would take that to a hundred and fifty-six, eight ninety-six. So, y'all understand what the mayor's talking about.
We need more transparency.
They're getting more transparent than that.
You can't, you can't, man. I'm going to say that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll support you.
Let's, I need a motion?
Motion to approve John's seven-and-a-half percent pay raise?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Deputy Mayor Gerton, and a second by councilmember Dyer.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can we have an effective date added to that to be whatever it was, the fifteenth, June fifteenth?
June fifteenth.
Okay. Minutes motion. All right. So, motion by councilmember Gerton, second by councilmember Dyer. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero.
Okay. Also, we're going to have to do another motion according to the agenda item to the performance evaluation and accept the summary results.
Okay. I would entertain another motion on item number ten to accept the summary results in the one-year performance evaluation.
I make a motion that we accept the performance evaluation.
Second.
The summary results.
Second.
All right, a motion by councilmember Hume, second by Deputy Mayor Gerton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. All right, moving on to public forum. I have two speakers. The first person being Robert Murphy. Mr. Murphy, please come up, state your name and address, and you will have three minutes.
My name is Robert Murphy. I live at twenty-one eighty-six Highway A one A, right across the street from Millennium Park. And I'm going to reset talking on it because I understand it's going to be a workshop that I think we should get some kind of an input or some kind of money from people for a yearly pass to park there. The other beaches that are doing that now, they're coming into our beach first and taking the parking spaces away from the people from our town. I know myself, I'll buy a pass, but I don't need one because I got Johnny Walker to push the button to walk across the street right to the beach. But it's something to look at. It's a little bit of income, and it'll save some, you know, aggravation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. All right, next I have Lori Myers. Please state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
My name is Lori Myers, and I live at eleven thirty-three Stephen Patrick Avenue in Indian Harbor Beach. And I've lived here for twenty-nine years, and I'm sorry if I tear up during my speech because it's personal. I'm here because of my nephew, Marine Corporal Dustin Shrag. My sister Nina is his mother, and his father Preston lives in Satellite Beach, and tonight I'm here on their behalf. Dustin died in Iraq while on a secret mission, and he was missing for several days before his body was found on May sixth of two thousand and four, and he was twenty years old. Another Marine in his unit went missing with him, and his body was found the day before Dustin's. They both drowned in the Euphrates River while on a night mission to look for hidden weapons. I'm talking to you today because the section of Highway A one A between O'Gally Boulevard and Pine Tree Drive was honorarily named Marine Corporal Dustin Shrag Highway. Dave Panacola was instrumental in making that happen for our family, and we are very grateful for that. The reason I'm telling you about this is that one of the signs that was erected around twenty years ago is very faded. It's the one at the O'Gally Boulevard location on A one A, right in front of Canova Park. I'm asking today that the city please replace it for a new sign. It's so faded, and you can hardly see it. I also wanted to remind everyone who Dustin was and what he died for. And some of you may remember a Memorial Day in the past when a soldier in full uniform stood and saluted that sign all day long in gratitude to those who died for our country. He stood there in full uniform in the heat of the day, and I don't know if any of you remember that, it was in the newspaper. I also brought pictures of Dustin so you can all see who that sign was put there for and remember him when you drive past it. Thank you. This is Dustin. And this is Dustin. I just want you to think of him when you drive by that sign. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know if this is the right venue for requesting a sign change.
Yes, it is. It's perfect venue.
I know my sister did ask for one. My sister Nina asked somebody for it a while back, and, and nothing happened. So, because of this Memorial Day past, it just refreshed my request that I wanted to have it put on.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
John, can we reach out to DOT, please, and request replacement of the sign?
Ma'am, thank you for doing that. I'm a Marine.
Excellent.
Never hurts.
I remember attending Dustin's service at the rec center, and I cried with you that day.
Well, we'll certainly get something done.
Thank you so much. My family always appreciated that.
Okay. All right, that's it for public forum. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, motion by Deputy Mayor Gerton, a second by councilmember Boone. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. We adjourn.